Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. Council members, at this time, if you would please stand for the invocation that will be given by Councilman Curtis Edmonds, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds.
Gracious God, we're grateful for another day's journey. We thank you, Lord, for keeping us out of harm's way. Now, Lord, as we come to take care of the business of our wonderful city, we ask God that you keep us focused, that we make things plain and to the point. Bless us all that have come. We pray and ask it all in the mighty and holy name of Jesus. Amen.
(affirmative)
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 Thank you, Dr. Edmonds.
Members of City Council, if you would, please indicate your presence electronically.
Six members of City Council are present.
Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of November 22, 2016, and a regular meeting of November 22, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
(inaudible).
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted 6-0.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 16-370, presentation. Presentation to Mayor Kenneth I. Wright and Councilman Curtis E. Edmonds, Sr., for faithful City Council service. If Mayor Wright would please join Vice Mayor Simmons at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk.
That's right.
For those of you who don't remember, it was about six years ago, this very meeting, when Mayor Wright was presenting me with a "Thank You for Your Service" gift.[174.15][174.15](laughing) And so here we are, six years later, and in all seriousness, it's my pleasure, but kind of sad to say, "Thank you for your service." I think, to the public, you have to know that although particularly for Kenny and Elizabeth, who have had our friendship times and our butt-head times, we're still all one council together. And the first city manager I ever worked for said to a new council coming in in 2004, "You folks will never understand, the public will never understand, the type of pressure that you're under, nobody else except the seven of you." And that's still true. Whether we like the policy or don't like the policy, the seven of us sit under a different set of pressure than our spouses, our family, and all of you. And so with that, Mayor Wright, I say thank you for all of your time given to Portsmouth, not just here, but at home and away from your girls and your wife and your business and everything else. We do appreciate your good work. And I'm proud to give you the gold watch.[244.34][244.34](laughing) That's not really gold.[246.62][246.62](applause)
All right. Thank you very much.[250.12][250.12](applause) Thank you very much.[252.12][252.12](applause) Okay. And at this time, Dr. Edmonds, if you would, sir, please join me. I want to share, my friend, what an honor it has been for six years to be on this journey with you. And I remember almost six years ago, the night I called you and shared the great news that the City Council had wanted to extend an offer to this great citizen to be a part of this council. As you know, Elizabeth just said, when we won in '10, in 2010, we had to replace her seat. And this was the only fellow. My first bit of deliberation with this council was to select someone that these seven could agree on. That was tough. We had names all over the place. And after all those names went out, there was only one name that we all agreed that we needed on this council. And my first task was to convince you to join us. You remember that night? I certainly do. You remember that conversation? I remember it well. The bishop turped me down.[359.34][359.34](laughing) So my first job as mayor was to not let them know.[365.12][365.12](laughing) I got to know. The bishop promised that he would pray over it and give me a call in the morning. And I stayed up all night waiting.[375.77][375.77](laughing) But as the story goes, it has been an outstanding journey. We have come, this city, we are long ways under your leadership. And what you've been able to contribute to this council is countless. When you ride through this city and look at all of the development that we've been able to bring here to this city, some of the surprises that we had when we first came in, our financial house wasn't as stable as we wanted it. And I'm pleased to say we're leaving with about a combined general fund of about $115 million, okay? And about $60 million of that is unassigned fund balance, restoring that credit rating to a strong double A, and then doing the other tough things that we had to do as a council and go out and tell that story to citizens. And one of the things that I've admired about you, sir, is you've never, never let the politics of destruction get into your radar. Whenever you spoke, you spoke of clear mind. Whenever we talked one-on-one, you talked of clear mind. It was never about politics. It was an honor for me to work with you with bringing in our new city manager. We deliberated and talked and got the list narrowed down to, was it three or four? And then we presented it to the full council. It was done in a professional manner. And the research that we had both done and the conclusions that we made, it was really, it was really impressive. And that spoke a lot, not only just with bringing Dr. Patton on board, but the first decision we made when we had the, you know, we had a lot of chaos here coming on board. And one of them was in the assessor's office. And we both saw Ms. Cold Pepper. Where's Janie? I need you to come up here. Where's Janie? Is Janie here? No. She left. She had to leave. She brought stability to that office. And we saw immediately that she was the person to take that organization over, that department, and bring to this city what we needed. And look at what that department is doing today. We did the same thing in legal and a whole lot of other matters. And I just want you to know, these six years have gone by fast. I've enjoyed them, but I've enjoyed working with you, and I've enjoyed watching you help us find ourselves. You always knew who you were and what you wanted. And in times of good and bad, we were able to carry ourselves in a professional manner. And I've always tried to pattern that behavior after you. So I want to thank you, sir, for your six years here as a gold watch. His First Lady is here. I want her to come up and join us. Madam First Lady, would you please join us? Let's give her a hand. That's right.[576.54][576.54](applause) We want to thank you for loaning us this fine gentleman for six years. I'm sure it's been easy.[591.41][591.41](laughing) I'm sure you don't read the papers. I'm sure you haven't had any of your church family come up to you and ask, "What are they doing down there?" But you got to know, we really appreciate and know what the sacrifice is to have him away from home, the church, and all of the things that he liked, investing his time into this city. And that's what it's all about, folks, being able to invest your time and give him back to your city. And so Bishop, I'm going to give you a minute to say a few words, but I do want to thank you on behalf of this entire council for your work. And First Lady, if there's anything you'd like to say, anything, we'd be more than happy to hear it. Should you go first?
I'll be very brave. I'm just grateful to God for the opportunity to be by His side as He has served the citizens of Portsmouth. It has really been a blessing to me, and it has made me more cognizant of the different issues that transpire in our city on a daily basis. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity. Thank you so much.
I have some notes, but it's up there in my space. May I go get it?
Go get them.
Yes, thank you. A gold watch.
Gold watch.
Oh, man.[678.82][678.82](laughing)
Part of that $58 million we got is unassigned fund balance.
I didn't know that this was going to transpire tonight, but I'm so grateful to have had the pleasure to work with you all. And I'd just like to share just a minute or so. It has been a privilege and an honor to have served in a city which I was born and reared. Portsmouth is for people, all kinds of people, who live here, love it here, and will leave here only when God calls them. It will take the honest efforts of the taxpaying citizens to move the city to new heights. Not some of the people, but all of the people, black, white, men, women, every portion and area of the city that we lovingly call home, has greater heights to reach, even though we won't be there, but we'll be in the background. I believe that we can overcome together all of the pitfalls that lie ahead of us. We must discontinue to be the breaking news that the newspaper puts in every week because of disunity, but rather breaking news for the positive things that shall yet be accomplished by us all. Eyes have not seen, ears have not heard, nor has it entered into the hearts of the citizens of Portsmouth, the great things that God has in store for us all. Thank you for having given me the opportunity to have served our city. I challenge my colleagues, my colleagues who have been faithful to the job, to move onward and upward in the city of Portsmouth. May God continue to bless us all and give us the attitude of remembering the acronym TEAM. Simply means together, everybody achieving more. Let's do it all together. Thank you very much.[813.63][813.63](applause)
Okay. Now, at this time, before we get into the agenda, we have three short presentations that I'd like to be presented for the public. The first will be our update on our FEMA status. Last week, the city manager and myself met with the FEMA coordinators, as well as our emergency management team. And I thought it was fitting that we asked Captain Justin Arnold, who's our Assistant Emergency Coordinator, if he would come up and share some of the information that we discussed in the meeting for the purpose of letting all of our citizens know the things that have gone on since this terrible storm Matthew came through and did the damage that it did not only here to Portsmouth, but to Hampton Roads. And following him, I'm going to ask Meg Pedinger to come up and talk. She's our floodplain administrator, and we've got some exciting news that we want to share with you that relates to our community rating system for flood insurance. And then following those two, we're going to have Ms. Donnell Brown, who is our interim executive director of PRHA, to come forward and provide us an update on the citizens who were displaced as a result of Hurricane Matthew. With that, Captain, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council. My name is Justin Arnold. I'm a captain with the Portsmouth Fire Department and currently the deputy emergency coordinator for emergency management. Thank you for allowing me to give an update on the storm recovery effort that's ongoing in the city of Portsmouth. As most are aware, on the evening of October 9, the city of Portsmouth was affected by the remnants of Hurricane Matthew. The event dumped 15 to 20 inches of rain in our area in a very short amount of time. This caused historic flooding the area has not seen in many years. As the sun rose on the morning of the 10th, crews from fire, police, and public works began to assess the floodwaters and establish a plan of action moving forward. Unfortunately, the floodwaters were still very high. Main arteries were closed due to traffic problems and debris, and power was cut to a great portion of the city. Unlike a wind event like a hurricane or a tornado, flooding damage can come in many forms and often takes time to develop. I say this because the initial damage assessments conducted by FEMA and VDEM only captured visible flood issues and damages and not issues like mold and environmental concerns. Due to this lack of initial reported and assessed damage, the city of Portsmouth was not included in the initial federal declaration for emergency funding on November 4, 2016. However, with hard work and regional partnerships with cities of Suffolk, Hampton, and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, the federal government decided to complete a second damage assessment. This second citywide effort produced drastically different numbers, doubling the properties that were damaged and increasing eligible households for FEMA assistance. Portsmouth was then added to the declaration for individual and housing assistance funding on November 21, 2016. After the declaration, FEMA was very responsive, and with coordination from the Department of Social Services, opened the Portsmouth Disaster Recovery Center on November 26. Since opening that disaster recovery center, 452 registered applicants have received, or at $482,000 in individual and household assistance. The program is divided into two areas, with housing assistance covering repairs of structural damage and other needs assistance that can cover furnishings, transportation, and medical expenses like funerals or doctor visits. In most cases, FEMA assistance is only enough to get the applicant back on their feet and not to restore a property back to pre-storm conditions. If applicants need further assistance in restoring their property, the Small Business Administration has provided low-interest loans, up to $200,000 for home and business owners for repair of damages. To ensure all residents were notified of the recovery center and FEMA funding, permits and inspections, physically posted notices on all damaged structures, and the FEMA Disaster Survivor Assistance Teams went door-to-door to register elderly and disabled documents who could not make it physically to the DRC or the Disaster Recovery Center. FEMA will begin to demobilize this week from our city, with our local Disaster Recovery Center closing on Thursday, December 15 at 6:00 p.m. Although the center is closed, the main recovery center in Virginia Beach at the Central Library will be open until Friday, December 23. While individual citizen programs are coming to an end, the city of Portsmouth just kicked off their public assistance program to recover the city's operational costs incurred during the storm and repair storm damage. This program will be ongoing for the next 12 to 18 months. At this time, I thank you for your time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. And so you say we are 400, and what was the amount in claims that, checks that's been cut?
We are just a fraction over $482,000, and that was at close of business today.
Okay. All right. Very good. And I think during the meeting, did any of the FEMA reps happen to show up?
I did not see them, no, sir.
Okay. We had talked about several instances, and I think I talked about the vehicles. We had some 107 vehicles that we towed or moved out of the main artery over to the side parking lots. We didn't take them where we would normally, only because of the storm. And I think he said a lot of those were qualified, so we...
Yes, sir. And that also includes...
I think we put some information out that we met, Captain?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That also includes anybody that was visiting. So if you worked at the Naval Hospital and you were passing through and were stuck in floodwaters, as long as it happened in the city of Portsmouth, you could be covered.
Okay. All right. Very good. All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Captain, and thank you for your great work.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Meg?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I'll provide a brief update on the floodplain management plan and the community rating system, which is part of the National Flood Insurance Program. The city participates in the community rating system, and points are earned based on the activities that we do for floodplain management in mapping, public information, flood damage reduction, warning and response. And because we participate in CRS, property owners who have flood insurance policies get a discount on their policies. City's been in the CRS program since 2005. But every five years, the program is audited, and all of the activities that we do are audited and checked to make sure that they're eligible, and then they're scored for points. And the points that we get determine what class we're in, which determines what reduction people get on their flood insurance. The floodplain management plan, which you may remember was adopted by City Council in September last year, is part of the program, and it was reviewed as well. The floodplain management plan was updated with a task force, and FEMA scored it at 255 points. In the CRS program, the classes are 500 points apart between classes. So 255 points is a half a step all by itself. And the reviewer, the specialist that works with us, said that that was a great score. He normally sees scores between 150 and 210 points, and ours scored 255 points. And so his exact quote was, "Tell the folks that prepared that they did a great job." With the high score on the floodplain management plan and the submission of all our other activities, we scored 1,710 points in the CRS program. In 2009, our previous score was 860 points. And as I said, it starts at 500 points, and every 500 points, you go into a new class. So with this new score, the city will be raised from a Class IX, which we've been since 2005, to a Class VII. And what that means is that all eligible policy holders of their flood insurance policy will receive a 15% discount as of effective May 1 of 2017, because it's got to go on the federal register first. This will be an automatic reduction that will occur when the policies are renewed. The total amount will be over $300,000 a year, every year, in reductions that people will see on their flood insurance policies.
Wow. Wonderful.
So as the floodplain administrator for the city, I would like to thank the council for all of your support, because this would not have happened without your support. You appointed the task force, which gave us great support. And I'd also like to thank two individuals, Fred Brusso, who could not be here tonight. He's sick. He's got the creeping crud that everybody's got, because he started this back in 2015, asking the Army Corps for help. And then I would also like to thank Michelle Hamer, who is here from the Corps. Michelle, will you come up? Michelle agreed to take this project on in updating our floodplain management plan, put it in the federal budget, didn't cost the city any money, and worked so hard on the plan to get us the high score. Nobody's gotten a score like that in this region.[1387.78][1387.78](laughing) Oh, the other thing that I forgot to say was that there are only four other localities in Virginia that are Class VII. There are two that are Class VI, which is higher and hard. There are a lot that are VIII, and there are a bunch that are at IX. So we will be among only four other localities in Virginia that are at Class VII.
Good. Wow. All right. Thank you.[1412.21][1412.21](applause)
And the last thing I want to say is that we look forward to, the Corps has been such a great partner for the city, and so we look forward to working with the Corps in the future. And Michelle's going to tell you just really briefly about a couple of other projects that we hope to work on with the Corps.
Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you, Meg. Sorry. Honorable City Council members, Mayor Wright and Vice Mayor, I thank you for allowing me to speak today. Again, my name is Michelle Hamer, and I am chief of the Floodplain Management Services Section at the Norfolk District Corps of Engineers. I'm also co-chairman of the Virginia Silver Jackets and the Norfolk District's Flood Risk Manager. We are so happy that we're able to partner with the city of Portsmouth. In fact, I would also like to share that our district commander would like to come over and meet with you and have some discussions and share about our programs and authorities and different ways that we can partner in other programs. The floodplain management plan update was completed under our Floodplain Management Services Program, and that authority is provided to us under Section 206 of the 1960 Flood Control Act as amended. And the objective of that program is to foster public understanding of flood risk, the opportunity to mitigate that risk, and to make sure that we manage the nation's floodplains in a very prudent way. Again, as Meg had mentioned, that is 100% federally funded, federal-funded. So we're excited to be able to share that with the city of Portsmouth. Now, under the floodplain, I apologize, the Floodplain Management Services Program, there are other opportunities. We can look at flood-prone structures. We can look at flood reduction studies. And another opportunity that we're also excited to start with is the acquisition of first-floor elevations. Now, why this is important is your damages start to begin at your first-floor elevation, and that information is not widely available in the Hampton Roads area. So we will be able to partner when funding is available, as we work through the continuing resolution. When funding is available, we will be able to partner with the city of Portsmouth again and start to begin to strategize how to acquire those elevations and to glean from elevation certificates that the city already has those elevations. And that will begin to shape the picture of the flood risk within the city of Portsmouth. So we are very excited about that opportunity. In closing, I wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity, for allowing us to partner with you. And I also wanted to say that I greatly appreciated and was inspired by Meg's energy and her effort for supporting the citizens of Portsmouth, and also Fred Brusso's effort before her. And also, I wanted to congratulate the city of Portsmouth for this investment into the city in reducing risk and providing that information to the citizens. So thank you again.
All right. Thank you very much. And Meg, just to recap, our total savings there, starting when?
Starting May 1, 2017.
We're looking at about a $300,000 savings?
Just over $300,000 per year.
Okay. Well, excellent.
And as the flood insurance premiums go up, the savings will actually go up more. You know, so it'll be more than that, and that money hopefully gets put right back into the community.
And thank you. Meg, I want to thank you for doing a fine job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're right. She's had energy. She is a ball of fire when it comes to our whole floodplain management strategy. And everywhere there's a sea level rise meeting or a conference, I look around the room and hundreds of people, and I can find Meg there. And her passion for this has really paid off, so we want to thank you very much and pass that on to Fred as well. Thank you both.
We can still see you at those meetings.
And, yeah.[1644.15][1644.15](laughing) Thank you very much. And lastly, Ms. Brown, I want to thank you for coming. I've asked on two occasions for you to come and give us an update, and you have graciously accepted and came willingly to give us a status of where we are. And I want to thank you, because you don't have to do this, but we just think it's critical to make sure that we put the right information out to our citizens and make sure that everyone's on the same page as we work through whatever obstacles that we have as a people. So thank you for coming.
Well, you're welcome, and I feel that it is my responsibility to keep the council informed. I thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and the council. When I came the last time, things were kind of grim, because it was right after the flood. At that time, we had 85 units that were impacted, and there were 66 families that were displaced out of the 85. As of today, we still have 31 in hotels. 21 of them have been relocated to Lincoln Park. Three have gone with families, their family members. Five have moved out to other communities, and six are back in their current units. We're still in demolition and taking down the walls that had been impacted by the floodwaters, and we're still cleaning out units. We anticipate that that demolition process will end by the end of this month. The beginning of January, we will start rehab. We are working with contractors now. We have already ordered cabinets, and we're trying to get them in place by the first of the year. And it'll probably take about two to three months before we will have completed all the units that have been affected. As we rehab units and we're ready to replace, put people back into the units, we are calling on the city to do their inspections to make sure everything is okay and they're back to their units. I want to talk about the community support and activities. Thanksgiving, we had over 200 turkeys delivered to us from the Food Bank, and every resident at Swanson Homes that wanted a turkey got one. The Housing Authority thought about the people who were in hotels and how were they going to cook their turkeys. We hired a caterer to cook turkey dinners and deliver them to the hotels, to the 43 residents, 43 families that were there. They got a full turkey dinner from us. This past... This past Saturday, you might have seen on TV, we had 125 children that were affected by this flood. We had a breakfast with Santa. All those children came out. They were able, all of them left with at least five or six gifts. And I want to thank your police department. Portsmouth's police department was awesome. They donated gifts to our children. They came out and helped to pass out those gifts. Assistant Chief Green was there with her family and it was a very nice affair. I have to, and I just wish that more people were able to see what happened because it wasn't about us, it was about the children. And the children had so much fun. We are having another affair with, along with Grove Church and Allen Iverson before the end of the month for the children. And the Grove Church was very gracious in establishing an angel tree. And each child got to fill out a card saying what they wanted for Christmas. And Grove Church donated and gave all those gifts to the children at our event last Saturday. And I want to talk about FEMA. We also had a meeting with FEMA. And I'm saying this because I want people to know that, yes, this was a bad thing, but they, our people were not left without some help. FEMA came in and on average, every person and all the people that were affected did apply, have received on average $5,000. That's to replace the stuff that they've lost. And it was two months' rent and the, well, it says two months' rent and any other things that they might need incidentals. But they did receive approximately $5,000 each to replace their losses. So even though this has been such a terrible event, there was a lot of support given to the residents at Swanson Homes.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me just recap. You see, you have 31 in hotels now. 21 are been located in Lincoln Park. Six are back at home in their units. The ones that are not back, you said, as they come online, is there a priority for families with little ones first?
Yes. The three families, three families that went with their relatives, once their unit is or once we have units that accommodate them by size, they will be offered those units to come back. We've already determined that a number of people are probably going to want to stay at Lincoln Park and we're going to end up with vacant units at Swanson. But what we're doing now is, before the contractors come in, we are determining who needs to go back the quickest and trying to make sure those units are turned and ready for them to get out of the hotels. Because we know that it's difficult when you have, it's difficult enough when you have a unit, an apartment, when you have children. I'm sure it's very difficult for these folks who are living in a hotel with their children, even if they have one or two rooms. So we're trying to get them out as soon as possible. We have talked with the regional HUD office in Richmond and a notice went out to all the Hampton Roads housing authorities, asking them if they have vacant units so that we can get them out of hotels and into an apartment. They can either go there temporarily until their unit is ready or they can stay in whatever city that they're housed at. So we're waiting to hear from the local housing authorities in Hampton Roads and we should hear something by Friday.
Okay. And then my last question, on the units that have major renovations, have you been able to assess the amount of time that these folks will be out? The worst case scenario?
Well, what we're trying to do is the ones, we have what we call category A and category B. Category A is the worst ones. We're tackling category B because we can turn them quicker and we can get people back into them. So we're working towards getting as many people out of hotels as soon as possible. We're going to end up with some vacancies. We're probably going to end up with about 27 vacancies out of this because we have 27 people that eventually go to Lincoln Homes and I don't think they're going to want to leave. They're going to stay there.
Okay.
But if they want to come back, they can come back. But if they want to stay at Lincoln, they can.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Brown? Again, thank you for coming out and thank you for sharing that information. Again, it is always good to get the facts and make sure that we all understand. As the manager and I met with the FEMA representatives last week and our emergency management folks, they also shared some of the news with the Swansons piece, but we wanted to hear that from you. So thank you for coming out and good night.
You're quite welcome.
Yes, ma'am. And Dr. Petten, thank you very much for making this happen for me.
Thank you. Mayor, I could just say?
Cut your mic off.
As Mrs. Brown indicated, the police department coordinated the gifts for children, but every department in the city of Portsmouth was given a list and the ages that they were responsible for. And so there were hundreds upon hundreds of gifts from all of the departments in the city that the police department picked up and delivered.
And on average, each kid got about five gifts.
Some got more than that.
Well done. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address counsel on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. City managers report 16-371, adoption of an ordinance accepting a rescue squad assistance fund grant in the amount of $99,505.50 from the Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue and Emergency Services to purchase a medic unit. Vision principles, sustainable neighborhoods, and enhanced quality of life. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. 16-372, adoption of an ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $62,963 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2017 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services in connection with the final transitioning of all client cases to the Virginia Case Management System. Vision principles, sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life, and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
With adoption?
Second. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. 16-373, adoption of an ordinance to amend Article 3 of Chapter 36 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, tree planting and replacement by amending and reordaining Sections 36-52, 1, 3, and 4, Sections 36, 56, and Table 36.1 for the purposes of correcting certain references to the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, and other governing documents and designating the Board of Zoning Appeals as the venue for appeals of determination made under the article. Vision principles, sustainable neighborhoods, enhanced quality of life, and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
May for president?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. 16-374, adoption of an ordinance appropriating $43,900, excuse me, $290,029 by classification to implement the operating budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools for the third quarter of fiscal year 2017. Vision principle, efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call and I have a speaker, Mr. Mark Adolde-Kutrowski.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and fellow citizens. This is the last time I'm going to speak on this issue this year, this calendar year. As you've heard me say on numerous previous occasions, and as I will continue to say until this policy is changed, this is unnecessary. You could appropriate this money during the normal budget process and do it once. What you should be doing, rather than going through this exercise in repetition of doing quarterly allocations, what you should be doing quarterly is reviewing, or more frequently than quarterly, is reviewing the performance statistics from the school system and tracking where they are with regard to budgeted expenses and actual, and stay abreast of how they're moving through the year. That's really what the, what the grand jury report was trying to get you all to do. The accountability does not come from doling out the allowance on a quarterly basis. And I noted that our mayor-elect and a council member-elect are in the chamber tonight. I particularly want to ensure that they hear this. It's not necessary to write the checks once a quarter. Think of all the checks you're saving, saving three checks by writing the check once. I don't know about you, but I have to pay for my checks when they run out. So you save the city some money in that, in that sense as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
There are no additional speakers on this item?
With option?
Second. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. Councilmember's item 16-375 is being requested for withdrawn by the management. We're in need of a motion and a second to withdraw.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0 and it has been withdrawn. 16-376, adoption of an ordinance to amend the FY 2017 Capitolton Improvement Program Budget by authorizing the transfer of $500,000 from the 801 Water Street Project to the renovations to various buildings category to fund the relocation of the magistrate and police roll call offices, the transfer of $109,000 from the 801 project to the IT computer room project, and the transfer of $50,214 from the Portsmouth Community Colored Library Museum ADA grant project to fund PCC LM building and site improvements. Vision principles, a robust and prosperous economy and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
May for president?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. 16-377, adoption of an ordinance authorizing certain changes to the city's budget to reflect the settlement of claims by and against South Norfolk Jordan Bridge LLC. Vision principles, a robust and prosperous economy and efficient service delivery. Electronic roll call and I have a speaker, Mr. Mark Adolde-Kutrowski.
Good evening for the last time in 2016, Mayor, Council, and members of the citizenry. There's an old, there's an old anecdote. It's a puzzle, actually. Is it better to be in right relation with your Creator or to have a tuna fish sandwich? Well, here's how it works. Nothing is better than being in right relationship with your Creator. A tuna fish sandwich is better than nothing. Therefore, it's better to have a tuna fish sandwich. It's mathematical. So this settlement with the South Norfolk Jordan Bridge, yes, it is better than nothing. It brings some money to the city, but it's not the money that our assessor considers are due. And it's not equitable to the taxpayers who receive their tax bills every quarter and pay them. If you have friends in the right places, you too can get special treatment in terms of assessments. That's what this settlement says. Now, what is particularly disturbing about this is that the state has colluded in this. And it's a three strikes and you're out situation because the Commonwealth of Virginia has done this to Portsmouth on three occasions thus far. The Elizabeth River Crossings deal, the South Norfolk Jordan Bridge tax appeal, and they're doing it with the ports. Our city manager and city attorney went before the chief administrative officers at their meeting last Wednesday and spoke about the implications of this. This is a state election year. This is an opportunity for us to make ourselves heard to the people running for the top offices in the Commonwealth and the people running for House and Senate seats. We need them to understand that it is not acceptable to cheat the localities. It is not accessible to take away the little bit of tax authority that we have through special deals with special interests. Let's carry that message loud and clear.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Witter?
Yes, just have a question for the city attorney. I know we directed the city attorney to meet with the South Norfolk Jordan Bridge people. Did we ever bring that back for vote?
That was approved. The city council did approve the settlement of that matter.
Right. I mean, did we actually vote on it during a council meeting?
Yes, sir.
That's what I was trying to get clear. I just want to make, so this vote here isn't tying in the settlement vote?
No, sir. The settlement was approved. This is just recording the results therefrom.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good night, sir. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. There are no additional speakers. We're in need of a motion.
May for president?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 5-1. New business. 16-378, boards and commissions. Councilman Edmonds.
I don't have any at this time, but I'd like to take this last moment at the mic to thank my son for coming out tonight as well.
CJ, all right. Welcome.
16-379, items submitted by councilmembers.
Let me, let me first of all ask the manager, if you will. I received some correspondence about the transfer station and some community meetings that we had and that we had selected a location. Can you give us an update on that?
Right. Um, Mayor?
Cut your mic on, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as I sent to you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, as I sent an email to you all last night in just summary, in an effort to move forward in the site selection for the new transfer station, which is an integral part of the agreement which council gave and voted for me to sign, which was the use and support agreement between the city of Portsmouth and the Southeastern Public Service Authority, which is CIPSA. And we hosted a series of three open houses. We presented seven locations, which were strategic locations, which the city's team looked in depth across the city for those locations which could be considered for a transfer station. Everyone is advised that the acreage that was necessary for a transfer station is at least five acres. at least five acres, of which limits the city's opportunity for how much property we actually had with that acreage. And in those seven that we selected, we narrowed it down to three. And in the three that it was narrowed it down to, the one that we presented at the open house was the I-264 Greenwood site, which remains the most optimal for the egress-ingress. It's zone industrial. Its acreage is five-plus acres. It is owned by the city. It's the least intrusive to the community and neighborhood in regard to the requirements, which is off of that Carter, where trucks cannot go further than the site, which is the site right off of two six, I-264 and Greenwood. And it would give the trucks much easier time to get off and get back on the interstate. And so those were the two public, two, two open houses we hosted. And the team met with the Cavalier Manor Civic League meeting last night.
Okay, so when you had the open house meetings, did you present all seven of these locations and get a survey from...
No, we did not select all seven.
You did not? So you only presented the Greenwood Drive location?
That is exactly correct.
Okay. And who made that determination to only present the one location to the citizens?
We presented these to all of the seven locations and following the directions of the council members who voted and supported, and the four who gave advice for us to continue to move forward.
Okay. Did we, did council, go ahead, Dr. Whittaker.
Yeah. Dr. Patton, I was surprised to see the steps that had been taken because I know that there were several council members who voiced a serious concern about putting this trash site in Cavalier Manor. I know that I did not support that, and I'm vehemently against putting this type of dump site in Cavalier Manor, particularly since Cavalier Manor has a history of being neglected. The ditches that were in Cavalier Manor along Greenwood Drive and Cavalier Boulevard for years, and now to be coming back and, and putting this dump site in Cavalier Manor that is across the street from elementary school, Lakeview Elementary School, which we know from research that those kids will be exposed to some conditions that can elevate some of their serious medical conditions. Twenty percent of the students at Lakeview already have asthma. One hundred percent of Lakeview lunches are free lunches. They qualify based on their socioeconomic conditions. And I think for us to put a trash dump in that site and also not having discussed it with council beforehand, I'm totally against that. And I don't remember hearing any consensus from council to move in the direction of putting that transfer station there in Cavalier Manor. And the Civic League meeting last night, the, the Civic League does not represent the community's voice. The number of people that turn out to those meetings, that does not represent the community's voice. It's interesting, your open houses were outside of Cavalier Manor. You had two open houses where you presented the location. It, it would have been better to have put the community on notice so that you could have an open house directly in the community that was to be affected. We have a location already where the community has accepted the Willabrayda site that is presently being used. And I think what we are doing is a total disservice to the Cavalier Manor neighborhood, and I'm totally against that. And, and I know that there would be an outcry from Cavalier Manor if that is placed in there.
Well, thank, thank you for that, Dr. Whittaker. And I, I agree wholeheartedly. My point was, I wanted to make sure if members of council voted to put that site in Cavalier Manor, I want to know when did we take that vote? Because if a majority of us say do it, then we do it. But I don't remember us taking a vote here. Have we taken a vote in public that we were going to put this transfer station or dump site in Cavalier Manor? Have we taken that vote publicly?
No.
Madam Clerk, do you have a...
No, sir, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Should we not have council vote publicly to do something like that?
Well, I would think so.
Mr. Attorney, would that not be the proper thing to do? And then give citizens an opportunity to whether they, they showed up at an off-site or a public hearing that was outside of the community or inside of the community, should it not be advertised a little bit better as well as have a formal vote so we'll know who the council members are that voted to put this dump site in Cavalier Manor? Would that be proper, Mr. Attorney?
Mayor, you, this is the first, the question that's been raised, that what I understood to be the direction given at the last resolution was to move forward with regard to having discussion with SIPSA to entertain the transportation site in terms of getting a transfer station put in place. I, I'm aware, as, as, I'm sure all the council members are aware, there were a number of different sites available at the outset. There were several discussions in terms of narrowing those and then moving those forward. Certainly, there are going to be a number of opportunities in terms of moving this process forward in terms of selection and planning. There are a number of approaches that could have been taken. I'm not saying that one is above another, but I, I'm not aware that council took a particularly specific approach in terms of asking for it in one particular fashion, if that's what you're asking, Mayor. Yet, yes, it could be done by having a selection and, and going about that on the front end. That's a possibility, certainly.
Okay. That, well, that's my point, only because you're, you're talking a neighborhood of, of somewhat, what, 6,000 people? And that if, if, if city council has, wants to do that, and the majority wants to do that, I'm fine. But I just think those people need a chance to speak on this, and we need a chance to vote publicly for the record because this will come back. Someone's going to ask, who put this here? When was it voted on? And we can't say we didn't have a vote, or we gave you a nod or a wink to go build this thing out in Cavalier Manor. Again, I'm, whatever the majority wants to do, I'm okay with. But I think it needs to be a public vote, and citizens need to know, uh, who are the members that wanted to put that out there? Dr. Whittaker?
Yes, I just want to make clear, make it clear that the discussion that we had as a council, that there were, I believe, seven sites that were presented. And one was at, in Truxton, where the recreational facility in Cavalier Manor. And in both instances, we expressed grave concern for putting a trash station in communities that had been historically neglected. And so I don't know how we jumped from the seven to this one site. And I just want to make sure that the public is clear that there was no time where council directed the city manager to locate a dump site in Cavalier Manor.
So at this time, would it be the pleasure of the council that we take a vote and put this to a vote and put notification out so citizens can either come here or have a community meeting and make sure we properly notify the, the, the neighborhood?
Well, I...
I mean, because going to a Civic League meeting, and we know that most of these Civic League meetings, on an average, there's a handful of people. I don't think 6,000 people want to hear that seven people of a Civic League was briefed the night before that we were going to put a, a dump site. I just want to do it in decency and order, and I'm opposed to it as well, but I don't mind being outvoted. I just think it needs to be on the record, who wants this done, and so they can answer for it.
Ms. Mc, can I add an, I like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda?
Mayor, I, I don't think you can do this without going through a public hearing. I think it's got to go through the planning department, planning commission, and all that before it even, even gets here. I don't think you, I don't think they, the manager can, can go out and just do that. If, 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 Mr. Attorney, is that right?
Well, that was the reason why I brought it up. I'm stunned that we've got correspondence saying we've selected a site and we've talked to a Civic League, and I think this, this is, this is way out in front.
Well, I think it has to go through the planning, planning department, planning commission, vote, and then come before it even gets here. Isn't that correct?
The, the site has to go through regular planning approvals and, and the regular planning process, so it would have to go through...
So they can't, so, so, so they can't just, just do it?
Okay.
So we do not have a location, and before we have a location, we're going to make sure that we engage the public properly as well as go through the proper channels, planning, and to council prior to doing that. When, when the majority of the council voted for the SIPSA deal, it, it forced us to pick a site to put this trash station. Now that the council wanted to do that, and I think three of us objected, myself, Mr. Meeks, and Dr. Whittaker, now we're authorizing you to negotiate with SIPSA, but we also have to pick the site and make sure we do it in the proper manner. And I think at our last, or maybe this community meeting before that we had at the Churchland Library, someone had leaked that we had selected, um, the site out in Churchland. And we had standing room only with folks wanting to know, are you really going to put a trash station out here in our neighborhood? And we had to clarify then that no one had decided that. We don't know who leaked it to you. And again, that was a great amount of folks. And I, I can't imagine if Cavalier Manor is where we're going to put this, that we won't do the same thing. So I just want to make sure we do this the right way, and we don't mislead the public or anybody else that we have selected a site in Cavalier Manor. So, Mr. Attorney, can we make sure that we, we do that in, in proper order and it goes through the channels before we get too many people? Mayor, I, I just simply remind council that in your discussions with SIPSA and the resolutions that have been passed, you all set a outside limit of January 31st, 2017, for the discussion with SIPSA going forward in terms of, in terms of negotiating a discussion with regard to the Portsmouth transfer station. That was a fixed period of time, and that discussion has been in place for more than six months with that timeline set.
All right. Let me see. So we, yeah, Dr. Whittaker? I mean, ju- just because management put the cart before the horse, that doesn't mean now that we're going to just allow for this trash site to be put in Cavalier Manor because you, you put the plan out there before it had even been discussed and approved before council. The, the issue that Mr. Cherry is raising, yes, it does have to come back for a vote after it goes through planning, but what is being suggested is that somehow council has approved this step for it to be in Cavalier Manor. And I think to our city manager, that's, that's not what has transpired. And, and I don't want to mislead the public on that at all.
Okay. I, I agree wholeheartedly. I brought it up because I read the agenda, and, and when I saw the correspondence, I was surprised because I don't remember us selecting a site. I know four council members wanted to not go with Willabrayda, to go with the SIPSA deal. And with that comes selecting this site, and I don't know if all of that was conveyed to the public. And so now I want to make sure, as Dr. Whittaker said, that the public is clear, that we now have to pick a location in the City of Portsmouth to put this trash site. And the staff has picked seven locations that they think would fit within the criteria that we need. And so now we have to narrow that down if you still want to go with the SIPSA deal instead of going over with the Willabrayda deal. But we have to go through the proper process to do that, and I don't know, and I think like Dr. Whittaker just said, I don't want the public to think that we have made that determination for that site, unless there are four members up here have done that. Is there four members that said the Greenwood site?
No.
Did you?
I thought they were.
Okay. Mr. Cherry, did you pick the Greenwood site? You said no, Dr. Edmonds? I did not.
We talked about which group we were going to go with, but I don't recall.
Picking the location.
Let, let me remind council that...
We talked about that location.
At, at the last meeting that Mr. Meeks attended, he specifically asked you, Dr. Patton, about an update on the location of the transfer station sites, and you said to your recollection you couldn't remember. If, if there were one site that we had already predetermined, you, you would have known that at that meeting. And so to, to say that you thought that you had four votes to put it in Cavalier Manor, I don't know where that comes from. Where, where did we vote in open session on directing you to put a dump site in Cavalier Manor?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, I refrain from using the word dump because we are speaking of a transfer station. And nowhere in the country can, with the EPA and requirements for transfer stations, can a municipality place a dump site in any community. As we advised and had council members to visit the transfer stations within the region and the entities who are a part of SIPSA, nowhere did they go did they see a dump site. They also visited the landfill in the Churchland community, which is 120 acres of open air where debris is taken every day. The direction, as Mr. Ashby just advised in the vote that was taken, the signing of the agreement which I was authorized to sign, in the resolution determining a site, which we presented all the sites, we talked about all the sites, we gave the, the pluses and minuses, we narrowed it down to three, then we discussed the three, and then we provided with those, that site, which provided the most optimal of the comments that I have read, and have, I have shared it with members of council. I have even put in the executive briefs updates on it. So it is not that I unilaterally made a decision because, as the city attorney said in a process of which we are going through, all of the matter will come for a vote, but the first part is the determination and continuing the discussion and moving forward with SIPSA, who this body voted and authorized us to continue the discussion to include a selection of a site that has to come back for a vote and all of its pieces that have to be placed and put in place.
Well, Mr. Mayor...
Go ahead.
Dr. Patton, whether, whether we get caught up in linguistics of whether it's a transfer station, dump site, what we are saying is that to put trash in Cavalier Manor, that is not something that is going to be permitted by the community. And, and there were council members that expressed strong concern to that. Also, the executive brief that was received, that you referred to, was the brief of December the 2nd, which is the brief for this meeting. That's the brief where you mentioned, and, and in this brief, you, you didn't mention Cavalier Manor, you mentioned a selected site. There, there was no indication in this brief that it was Cavalier Manor. So for you to say that you told us that this was a location, it, it talks about here, it says, "The open house will..." the open house will provide a forum for the public to learn about a selected site. Nowhere in there does it mention Cavalier Manor. Cavalier Manor is not mentioned until we get this email that I believe was received around 8:34 PM yesterday that talks about this I-264 Greenwood Drive site remains the most optimal ingress and egress. That was my first indication that it's Cavalier Manor.
Last night at 8:30?
That's, I believe that's what this email was sent out. Says yesterday, 8:34 PM. So I just want to make sure the public is clear that at no time that we indicate Cavalier Manor because in your executive brief, it doesn't even refer to that site. And I'm just totally against and to not present the seven options to the citizens, I think, was a disservice as well. If it's an open house, then why weren't all of the options presented to the citizens at the open house? Dr. Patton?
The seven that were presented to you or when they were presented was narrowed down to three. So in the three, which I'm sure you all familiar with what they were, which you talked about Burton's Point for years, we gave all of the indications as to why Burton's Point was not an ample, because it wouldn't even come on board for the city to receive it from the EPA and the work that's being done until sometimes late 2019 or 2021 and the settlement may take to 2020 or 2021. The second site, which was the Frederick Boulevard off of where the pines was located, the cost which would have been and probably not approved dealing with the railroad to get back to that back area of which was an idea or recommendation by Councilman Cherry, the cost of revamping the entire egress-ingress on Portsmouth Boulevard, which would have been at the expense of the city. And the third was the 5.3 acres industrial zone off of an interstate, easy egress and ingress. So those were the three.
And I just think for clarification and citizens need to know, if you don't know what a transfer station is, all of the trash trucks in the city of Portsmouth, wherever you pick up trash, have to find some one location to dump all of that trash and then put it in a larger container and then ship the larger container over to SIPSA. So wherever we select this site, all of the trash trucks through the city is going to come to that one location. That's why it's called a transfer station. So what we're proposing to put in a location in this city is somewhere for all of the trash trucks to come, which I think is the reason why three of us voted no on the SIPSA deal when we already have Willabrator and we already have a site where the trucks are already going and the majority of the council voted no not to go that direction. And because the majority did not do that, now we have to pick another location in the city. And so I think that deserves a public discussion and I think the citizens need to be involved in that decision before we push this through the process and give the appearance that council wants to put it in Cavalier Manor. That's my issue and I think that needs to be a vote and it needs to be on the record who did that. Yes, Vice Mayor. And if there's a vote tonight to do that and we're outvoted, I'm okay with that, but it needs to be on the record who's in favor of putting this transfer station in Cavalier Manor. Yes, ma'am.
I don't disagree with you that there should be more public discussion, but you have three new members of council that will take in office in two weeks and that is the body that needs to have this discussion, not the one sitting here tonight.
Okay. Don't have a problem with that either. I just think it needs to be a, the public needs to weigh in on this and council members that vote need to be held accountable as to why they wanted to do that. And that's why we're here. So to do this and to say in some, somewhere we came up with this and citizens are going to start asking questions later and then we'll say, well, council told us to do it. We don't want that. We want the record to show who selected this site and why was this decision made to not continue to utilize Willabrator instead of going with this new site. Okay, with that, yeah, Dr.?
Yes, I believe the city attorney gave us a timeline of January the 31st and so during the interim, will the city manager's team be pushing forward the Cavalier Manor site and moving in that direction, Dr. Patton, in this interim before our next meeting?
Dr. Whitaker, the March timeframe is a discussion with regard to development agreement, the opportunity to cancel based on the draft agreements and the early discussion.
Excuse me, I thought you said January.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. January 31st, 30th or 31st, it will give us an opportunity to terminate based on the draft agreements up to March. I want to say the end of March.
So the January date, what is needed by that time period?
The January date was to begin the discussion in terms of trying to put together the, all of the terms to act on a location, to haggle out the essential terms of all the agreements with regard to SIPSA and have them move forward in terms of their planning and whatnot for the process. If the process doesn't come to fruition, if it can't be accomplished, then the March date will be the trigger date to come out of the agreement.
Okay, so the January, the January date is not a drop dead date as far as location?
The January date was to be.
If we don't have a location specific by January, the end of January, then?
The expectation was that there would be a location to work on, certainly. It would go through the process. That doesn't mean that would be the final location or the accepted location because there's other processes, but there was the expectation that that would be, if you all recall, many of the cost terms and whatnot in terms of the relationship with us and SIPSA are location dependent. And so you must have some location for SIPSA to make some estimates in terms of what the cost, timing and the issues would be between the two bodies.
Okay, well then I will withdraw my motion and just ask if we would have a consensus from council to ask the, to request of the city manager to cease from moving forward on the Cavalier Manor site until, as Councilman Simmons said, until the new council is seated.
Well, before we do that, let me hear from Dr. Edmonds and then Mr. Moody. Dr. Edmonds?
Well, I think that we need to do something, put it on hold or whatnot, since we're not coming to any consensus as what needs to be done. Apparently, we need to wait on it so that we can look at it and listen to it again so that we can make the right decision. So maybe waiting for the new council to get together next year might be the best thing to do.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, the city manager's chronology of events is exactly right. The potential locations were discussed at a public work session and nobody's been blindsided. Some of the voices I hear of concern tonight sat quietly during the public work session. Council was also provided tours of transfer stations. As I recall, one of them was across the street from a high school, another was across the street from a hospital. So they aren't dump sites as described earlier, but the Vice Mayor got it correct. This is a lame duck council. The council that will be seated come January the 1st, sworn in December the 30th, is a council that should be having this discussion. So that's my thoughts on it.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker?
I just want to see if this new council is going to, that's why I said I think it should be deferred. I think it's going to be a telling moment. Will this new council, and once again, you can call it what you want, but that is trash being dumped into our community. Will this new council approve that? The sites that you, and also, there was no silence in those meetings. I know I expressed, Bishop made some comments about the location, Mayor did, Mr. Cherry made comments. We didn't sit silently on that issue and so I just want to make sure we're clear on that. So I would like to see if, where the new council is going to go with putting this site now. The, let me mention this too. The transfer stations that you mentioned that are near hospitals and homes, I think what you need to make clear, was the transfer station there and the community was built around them or was the community there first and then a transfer station was put in? Because that's what you have with Cavalier Manor and also with the trucks in Brighton neighborhood. You have a community that's already there and now you are looking to put a transfer station in it. And I'm curious if it was that the communities were built around the transfer stations.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we've got a consensus to defer this item and not move forward until the new council is in place to decide and select the site where this transfer station is going to be. So if that is the consensus, which it looks like it, you don't have a consensus. Hold on.
Not a consensus.
Do we?
It's a, we're just asking for a consensus.
To defer, right. Mr. Cherry, myself, him and him to defer to the next meeting.
Did Cherry say that? Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's not what he said.
What are you saying?
What he said was she has to stop work on this until the new council is seated. Isn't that what you said?
That's what you mentioned, that it would be better for the new council to discuss this issue. So if the new council is going to discuss this, then why would the city manager be moving forward on the Cavalier Manor site if we're going to have further discussion? Can't do both.
Okay, we're deferring that item until the first of the year. Okay. Any other items submitted by council? Vice Mayor Simmons?
On a much, much, much lighter note.
Is it snowing in Portsmouth yet?
It's going to be on Friday night. Yes, sir, it is. So first of all, it is very important to thank some citizen volunteers and some city employees who put together, I call it Dr. Patton's inaugural children's Christmas parade, which was this past Saturday. Our citizen volunteers, Orv Lindley and Peter Youngblood, who are the chair and co-chair of the Mayor's Military Affairs Committee, who put on the Memorial Day Parade, were volunteers in this parade also with our very own Renee Spratley, who did a super job of putting together this parade. Her boss, Mark Palmerchuk, our Director of Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services, Tim Spratley, Deborah McDuffie, Bernadette Hogg, Chad Gray, Carl Painter, Tony Colden and Vivian Franks, all from Recreation and Leisure Services, all put together a super parade. I kid you not, if you didn't see it, you missed something spectacular. I think every little girl especially who had any costume to be an angel or a dancer or cheerleader in the city was in the parade and they were really cute. On a similar note, this coming Sunday, December 18th from 11 to 5, Winter Wonderland in the old 1846 Courthouse building at High End Court Street, the Coleman Collection, little figures with Santa Claus also present, is open from 11 to 5 this coming Sunday and it is free admission for any resident with an ID with, you know, Portsmouth City address. It is going to snow every Friday and Saturday night at 5:30, 6:30 and 7:30 PM beside the children's museum at 200, on the 200 block of High Street, 5:30, 6:30, 7:30. It snows in the Middle Street Mall off the roof of the children's museum.
We want to thank Don Slater for coming out.
Making it snow.
That's right, helped make it snow.
The Tadwater Concert Band along with saxophonist Sam Rucker is going to play a free concert at Willett Hall this Thursday night, December 15th at 7:00 PM with Holiday Harmony music of the season. On December 21st, Wednesday, December 21st at Oasis Social Ministry, we will have the homeless persons Memorial Day. That's where we have a candlelight vigil for our homeless brothers and sisters who have passed away during the past year. And unfortunately, as I go to these from year to year, there are more and more who we eulogize. That's at 5:30 PM on December 21st. There is a lot more activity going on that you can read in portsmouthva.com and get all these particulars and of course, the last event of the year, last city event of the year, on December 30th, which is a Friday night, we will have the official oath of office ceremony for the newly elected mayor-elect John Rowe, councilman-elect Nathan Clark, councilwoman-elect Lisa Lucas Burke and myself, Friday, December 30th at 6:00 PM at I.C. Norcom High School in the auditorium and all the public is certainly welcome to attend.
Right, pretty good. Well, before I go to Dr. Whitaker, I do want to give a shout out to Don Slater at Wavy TV 10. I think it was, what day was it, Dr. Patton, that he was here? Friday? He did his weather broadcast from the children's museum. We made it snow. It was great. And what night, Mr. Pace, was it that I saw you? We were out, it was snowing with all of the kids. Was that, that was also Friday as well. You were going over to take photos and I was leaving. But anyway, that's great stuff and it's great for our kids and the atmosphere and I want to thank Mr. Slater for the positive press and thank our folks with the museum for doing this. This is a great event every year. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, I just want to bring to the attention of council the email that we received from the city attorney and I had some follow-up questions on it. The email pertained to the issue of how much we're spending on outside council. There were some concerns about hourly fees and I hope you've had a chance to look at the emails to see that we have been paying some significant hourly rates to different attorneys and law firms. My question, Mr. Attorney, is in your information here, you have it broken down by years and I know I came on board in 2015 and it has here for 2015 that there was $20,368.60 expenditure. Does that include, we had a significant settlement with the police and fire that I thought was, there were hundreds of thousands of dollars that were spent in legal fees, but that's not, I'm not sure, is this a cash basis or accrual? How is this being listed here?
Dr. Whitaker, some of those values are reflective of outside council legal bills paid out of the city attorney's office. The bill you may be speaking of may have been picked up by the risk management fund, depending on when it started or when it stopped. We've had different processes over time and as you saw in that chart, because there was such a big spike before my tenure, we have adjusted the means of doing that over a period of time to try to keep those fluctuations from hitting my particular office budget. If there are situations, they may be reflected in our risk management fund.
So let me make sure we're clear. When you're saying it's coming out of the risk management fund, are those funds that are coming from a third party insurer?
Not necessarily. They're just, they're, it would be city monies but reserved in a, outside of my particular budget.
Right, so those are still Portsmouth taxpayer dollars that are paying that?
Correct.
Correct.
Right, and I, I thought that's what we were trying to get to, how much were we paying outside council? And so, how can we get more accurate information here? Because, like I said, I know one of the reasons we settled that case was because there were significant legal expenses we were incurring, and I know it was much more than $20,000-some dollars.
I, I will check and make sure that that's not the amount reflected in a prior year. As, as I, I believe I mentioned to you in the email, the, we have a computer system that runs for several years. Some of those things were booked and actually kept in storage, and so I will check on that particular one, because now that you mentioned it, we, we're trying to put those together in the most efficient manner, but without having to literally go box to box for that tenure from Mr. Oakesman to the president.
Right, okay, because that also, that becomes a, a budget issue for council, because if we're spending significant amounts in outside council, then shouldn't there be a consideration of council that we hire some litigator to handle some of these matters instead of spending the hundreds of thousands of dollars? So, as soon as we can get that information, and as I mentioned in the email, also I requested how much we have paid individual law firms over this time period, which I mentioned to you about getting 1099 data, where are we on that?
I have made the request, there are some questions we need to clear up about whether or not we can produce the actual 1099 versus the information, and so we need to clarify that.
Well, why would, why would that be an issue, whether you, are you saying whether we have a 1099?
No, whether we can produce to you a 1099.
Oh, I don't need to, we don't, council doesn't need the 1099, council just needs the total that you will attain from the 1099.
Okay. When, when, when you sent the question back asking about 1099s, I thought you were actually requesting the 1099s because.
No, 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 you, you were talking about the difficulty in getting the amounts that we have paid individual law firms. I, I was just mentioning that you can use 1099s to get that information.
Right.
So, that's, that's, that's fine, we're on the same page.
So, total expenditures is what we're looking at?
Right, the total.
Okay, all right, very good. Any other items submitted by council members? All right. Madam Clerk, thank you.
16-380 report on pending items, and we have none this evening. 16-381, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Quentin Barnes.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name is Quentin Barnes, as you just mentioned. I'm here to speak on representing myself as far as like the community and job innovation. See, I'm here because, as we know, Goodwill, Goodwill is shutting down from Portsmouth City, turning a new leaf, relocating to another city. I'm asking if the city council would look into providing a way to help the community to down, mean, downtown Portsmouth by looking into a different resource to sustain their facility that can help provide job search and education and for the community as Goodwill have done. Reaching out to the churches and centers across Portsmouth is always a shocking idea, but with the help of the city council, I believe this matter will prosper in many ways. Even I, Quentin Barnes, we are devoted time reaching out to help bring this plan into action. The main thing is that Goodwill been at our last for a long period of time, for eight years, and they asked the help to promote jobs for people, bring in other businesses, businesses to people, and I see that they are moving their location to another location. So, what I'm doing, I'm standing up, I got citizenships of people who, with this facility to stay here, actually provide education and provide jobs and resumes for people around Portsmouth City. But the main, the main focus is, the main focus is, is that this facility is downtown Portsmouth, across the street from Roger Brown's. And by them moving, it helps people, I mean, by them moving, it, it, people relies on this particular business and field, and what I thought of is that if they move, it can increase in certain field that we don't want action to take place in Portsmouth, City of Portsmouth. So, and it would lower actions in City of Portsmouth as far as, now I don't want to be straight, straight facet, but I'm gonna say, violence, because it gives people a way to have an outlet if they've been laid off work, or if they need their resumes done, or if they need like education and stuff like that, bad, been there for a long period of time. I believe if they move it, it wouldn't, it, it, it will, it will cast out a lot of things. So, my main focus is, can the city council help provide a facility, or find a facility in order for this kind of activity to stay, because it's only of a Goodwill that this stay right here in this community, because it doesn't, it does no harm, but it actually promotes people to get up and reach out and go for their drinks.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Barnes. Let me just share with you, have you spoken to the folks at Goodwill? Because I believe they're relocating right down the street where Mid-City, Frederick Boulevard and High Street, and they're building a larger location to be able to include all of those services and to expand what you're doing, so, and actually, out of the, Mr. Barnes, they're going to be able to be a better service to you and other citizens that may need that.
I believe that Goodwill, it's the Goodwill across, you know, it's the Goodwill right across the street from Roger Brown.
Yes, sir.
They provide like jobs and, you know, education, but the Goodwill for which I heard is the Goodwill for, you know, like merchandise, like you bring merchandise into this facility, then they sell this merchandise, but I'm not really quite sure or.
Okay, we can check on that, but I, I think you're wrong. I think it's going to be multipurpose, because they have one over on the peninsula, I actually went over and visited the one on the peninsula, I think there's a shopping center that they converted over where they're doing dual services, and I think they're going to do the same thing here. We'll check on that, and we'll have Ms. Hoag there get back with you, okay?
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, good night. Mr. Cherry, do you need to speak, or? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Clyde Toler.
Good evening, elected officials, and non-elected officials, and each and every one citizen of Portsmouth. Kyle Toler, Brown Street. I come before you tonight, I see none, and I, you understand here, they said, report on pending items. But Bernadette, what happened to the newspaper? They was throwing them out in the street again, all them people yards and everything. I ask you, what could you do about that? So, I think that should have been, been the pending item. But anyway, I want to say, we need to, I want to say to brother Joe Wright, and to Steve Curl, and Reggie Adams, they haven't been here in a long time. See, I don't know what their problem is, or they sick, or whatever, but I want to say if they home and they listen, I hope they are brothers at arms, military, I hope they're doing fine. But anyway, I heard this when you said mail about the Civil League, that's a hard thing to say about the same peoples all the time. I don't care what you do, you did right, Ms. Patton, but that dumb, I don't care how much you say turnout to these meetings, it's the same people who will come out at these Civil League meetings every time. They'll sit at home, and they'll cry, "Well, I don't drive at night," and all, all kind of excuses, but if you say we got some food out here, they'll drive at night, they'll be there. You see, that's a bad lick on the, on the Civil League, because the Civil League does a lot of things in this city, and it's the same people that does it. Look at this council tonight. Look at all those people who ran for council, mayor, where are they? You see, have you seen them in here? Were they here before? No, that's why they lost. See, we need to look at these things like they are. Everybody have a Merry Christmas or a Happy New Year, and Ms. Simmons, that's a turbo jacket you got on, you're looking good, look at me. But anyway, Happy New Year, and everybody be nice, and look, stop cutting down people, and I hope all of you have a nice Christmas, and I ain't gonna sing my little song, I'm gonna keep my mouth shut and be nice, but I ain't gonna say, you know, the little song about hey, hey, bye, bye, you know, but I ain't gonna do that. But anyway, give me them gold watches, and I'll take them home and see if they really gold, and I'll bring them back to you, okay? Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of you.
Good night, Sergeant Major, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening, my name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. I'm asking Santa Claus to put toll money in the stockings of all the people of Portsmouth who will be using the Jordan Bridge, the midtown and downtown tunnels now, that the toll rates are going up. I am going, I am praying to God for a new birth in Portsmouth. I am praying that the newly elected will uphold their oath of office for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people. Currently, we the people are not recognized as a source of power to self-govern. Instead, our elected has allowed the federal government to overreach its constitutional powers by signing a contract with the regional non-governmental organizations, the HRTPO and the HRPDC. President Bill Clinton, while he was in office, made an executive order, the Transportation Equity Act for the 21st Century. It includes improving safety, protecting public health, and the environment. The General Assembly created the two regional organizations to obtain our money that we pay in taxes to the federal government. The mayor signs these regional contracts. Therefore, those we elected did not uphold their oath of office when they signed the contracts with these regional organizations. As a result, the elected have taken away our right to self-govern and put us under the authority of other municipalities, such as the Regional Service Board to owning land and buildings in Portsmouth, with a paying real estate taxes of over $187,000. The City of Norfolk to own land and buildings, with a paying real estate taxes of over $37,000 a year. The City of Chesapeake to own land and building, with a paying real estate taxes of over $2,000 a year. Also, for the City of Chesapeake, a new trash facility to take away our will of greater service, and also our RDS service. Another benefit for the City of Chesapeake by way of CIPSA is to build a transfer station at 469 at Greenwood Drive. The land's assessed value is over $372,000. If a private company owned this land, they would be paying over $4,000 a year in real estate taxes. I am praying that the newly elected will uphold their office, oath of office for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people in our city, and withdraw from these unconstitutional regional organizations. Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
Good night.
Mr. Barry Randall.
Good evening, members of city council, Dr. Patton, and Mr. Ashby. Barry R. Randall, Brighton section of Portsmouth, I was here tonight to express my gratitude and gratefulness to the Portsmouth Fire Department. My house caught on fire a couple of weeks back, and they were very generous, very, just a big help during that time. So, I don't know many of them by name, they was out giving me scriptures and very encouraging words, so I really wanted to make sure that they knew that their job is very, very important. A lot of times, we talk about police funding and the Sheriff Department funding, and we sometimes, you know, treat the fire department like the stepchild, but they are very needed, and I will continue to advocate for them as well. So, I wanted to say thank you to them. Mr. Mayor, I know we've had a rocky past, but this past election has caused me to gain a lot of weight, because I worked real, real hard, so this is a season of giving. If you have a few suits that you don't want anymore, I will gladly come by the gate and pick them up. And Councilman Whitaker, you have been very busy tonight, sir, and I do understand, because I do recognize that this will be your last council meeting, that you get to run the mayor. But I want to ask you a question, sir, because we know that you are so pro-black, and you quote Malcolm X so wonderful. If there was a white member of council who bullied his way to become the liaison to the PRHA department or board, and changed up the times so that great guys like Bishop Edmonds, who was on that board, couldn't be there to see the things that was being done, and this same white gentleman hires an attorney who happens to be white, that the PRHA board is paying $400 an hour, but didn't want to put those people in a, in a nice hotel until I stood up for them? I wonder what your opinion would be of him if you found out that this same white gentleman, same white attorney was working together, and this white gentleman decides to sue the TV station for $26 million, and the newspaper of a college campus? What would be your opinion of him, sir? Would it be greed? Would you use a quote, conflict of interest, old goody boy network? I'm real curious to know what you would say if a white person would do that? Because I sit back and I hear you talk all this stuff about blacks, blacks have asthma, and Truxton, and Cavalier Manor, but I haven't seen you in Swanson Home, not one time, and it don't get no blacker than you. You're not light-skinned, sir. So, I find it very disgusting for you to sit up there and continue.
Mr. Randall.
To portray.
Mr. Randall, good night, sir.
You are pro-black.
Good night, Mr. Randall.
Ms. Kentrell Devon.
Kentrell Devon, a resident of Portsmouth. Wow, I came down here tonight to speak on peace, it's amazing what I have to follow. But let me start by saying, tonight I'm thankful that the Lord, our heavenly Father, has saw fit to bring us here to the end of another year, despite our differences, many disagreements, and firm foundations of opinions, He is still faithful. I could not go without saying thank you, Mayor Wright, for your service, your commitment, and your second-to-none care for our children. That was important to me. Everyone knows that I just love and adore Bishop Edmonds. Your name is great, sir. I am a living witness that your name is great. Recently, you helped me do something very heartfelt, and I want to know, I was met by sincere love, no hesitation, because of your name. Thank you for your services, the peace that you brought, and you're always willing to listen to every citizen, even when you didn't agree. You still remain steadfast, faithful, and unmoved, and I appreciate that. You are a special leader, second-to-none in the City of Portsmouth, was much better, sir, with you being on this council. We can only hope that going forward, the people that have to replace you can do half the job, because your shoes can be filled by no one. I can say this, in order for us to have a peaceful going forward, we all, at the level of authority and the followership that we have, must use wisdom and be kind to each other. We can no longer use social media as a bullying tactic, as a disrespectful place, and I say that because, and as you know, Mr. Moody, you used my name in a very derogatory way, and you had citizens reaching out to me in fear because of what I said. First of all, I have blocked you on my social page, and I believe you have done the same. You don't have time to be sharing Facebook posts, whether you like them or not, you don't have time to do that. So, going forward, because we cannot undo what has been done, I respectfully ask you to keep my name off of your post, stop threatening with going to get a lawyer, let it go, as I too will let it go. There's nothing else I can say to you outside of let it go, and I too will let it go. And I see you have pushed your button, but again, I say, let's let it go. I want everyone to have a happy Christmas. I want everyone to have a happy Christmas, very Happy New Year, enjoy friends and family, and football.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Devon, I blocked you probably about two and a half years ago. Any, anything that you get from me comes from a third party. Certainly not from me to you. And I will save you the embarrassment from reading some of your posts that someone shared with me. And I agree with you. Peace be with you. You come speaking of peace, but some of your comments don't sound very peaceful. So maybe 2017 will be a good change. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ms. Sheila Joseph is our last speaker.
Hello to everyone. From the last meeting that I spoke about concerning my home and the ditch and documentation, and Mr. Cherry came out and Mayor Wright, play back the tape or just get with me. Anybody, I mentioned I had videos and pictures to document everything. And now that the hurricane came, just 1,400 square feet downstairs in my home, I just say one room had 200 gallons. I know my son and I got down there with a vac and vacuuming it out, and we made 20 trips. That's not talking about the other rooms in my hallway. It's the size of two rooms, okay? Now, I have complained about some of that before the hurricane and after the hurricane. And from the time of the hurricane until now, before I came here, pulling stuff out of my home, exposed with mold and all this smell. And I can't get out until I get contractors to come and give me prices. FEMA, they try to do whatever, but they can't do until I get what I need. But I was trying to talk about prevention a long time. And I complained about the ditch and the drain. Then I complained about the pig that you, none of you know about, but Ms. Hall, Ms. Moore, Mr. Wright, and quite a few other people that work under you. I documented when I let them know. Now that all this smell I have to deal with of a pig, considered as a pet, but it's not in the home, it's in the yard. Then I'm gonna have to deal with the flood, all the contamination of recycling going to my home next door and all the contamination that go along with it. I will be requesting for assistance with. So whoever's in charge with testing water, testing the soil, and also my land I had complained about, that my father left me 62 years ago, been in my fam, my family. I've been there 26 years and I spoke about it. Then I spoke about how people went into the city assessment. I won't go into details because I'm planning on getting some legal, you know, assistance. And, but I can say, a dead man cannot change information in the city assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Mr. Cherry, did you go out and look? Did you go out and look at her? What's the issue?
The issue is, there was a drainage at the end of the street that the city went out and cleaned. But there's also pipes in front of the homes that are private. And the city wasn't able to do anything with that part. But they did clean out the back part, that is the, I guess, the drainage easement that the city maintains as opposed to keep cleaning. They went out and did that part, but they're doing, they're doing it with the pipe that drains right in front of her home that she's referring to that as part of the private property, her home and the home next to her.
So that's the citizens' responsibility, not the city's?
Basically.
Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anything else for the good of the matter? Okay, I want to wish everyone, yes, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.